I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez. Mr. McIrvin.
Here.
Ms. Witchy. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, two absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move we excuse the absent council members.
Second. All in favor of excusing the absent council members, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none? The motion passed. Next thing we have is a proclamation.
Okay, proclamation, ready in Renton month. Whereas September has been designated by the President of the United States of America as National Preparedness Month and coincides with the City of Renton's Ready in Renton Emergency Preparedness Campaign. And whereas Renton has experienced natural and human-caused disasters in the past and scientific evidence indicates the city and the region remain vulnerable to disasters in the future. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, our businesses, and our neighborhoods can reduce injuries, fatalities, and economic devastation from disasters. And whereas the basic steps of emergency preparedness are the same for everyone. Make a plan, build a kit, and help one another to become self-sufficient for up to two weeks. And whereas because staying informed is a vital part of responding appropriately to emergencies, all members of the Renton community are encouraged to locate and bookmark their sources of emergency information in advance at rentonwa.gov to sign up for Alert Renton and to follow the city's social media accounts on Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor. And whereas there is great language diversity within the community and Renton residents and businesses are encouraged to share with their neighbors the translated information at bit.ly/predirednesspublications and to relay any emergency messages to help their neighbors understand and take appropriate lifesaving actions. And whereas Ready in Renton creates an important opportunity for every member of the Renton community to prepare their homes, businesses, and neighborhoods for any type of emergency. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 to be Ready in Renton Month in the City of Renton and encourage all Renton residents to formulate a preparedness plan. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 19th day of August 2019. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Seeing none? Proclamation is passed. And Deb Needham is here to receive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is our annual preparedness campaign. And I like to emphasize that preparedness is important because it's something everybody can do to help themselves survive a disaster and do better. We've recently upped our preparedness recommendations to comply with national and state recommendations to prepare for two weeks. We realize for some people, this is a hard stretch, but that's where the help each other comes in. Because what we're after is not just to have people survive a disaster, but also to have them thrive after a disaster. Our real goal is community resilience so that people can do well as a community coming together to survive the disaster and to do well afterwards in recovery. This year, our focus is on mitigation. It's an aspect we haven't talked about much, but it's where we can do things that actually prevent the damage from occurring or maybe even prevent the disaster completely. So this year, we're doing a revision of our hazard mitigation plan. We're going to be having an article coming to your doors. At Renton City News, we'll have an article and a link that you can follow to a webpage to get more information about what you can do to prevent the damage of disasters. We're also going to have a meeting that we're hosting here at City Hall on September 19th from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. where the public can come in and comment on the hazard mitigation plan and some of the strategies that we're designing to help reduce the damage in the City of Renton. So thank you again for the recognition on this important issue, and I hope we'll see you at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have a public hearing on the TIP. Is Jim, Matt, you, or Angie? Or both?
Greetings, council members. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the update for the Transportation Improvement Plan for 2020 to 2025. Each local jurisdiction is mandated by law to have a comprehensive transportation program that looks forward at each six years ahead and updates for the future plans for the transportation network. And the plan supports the city's mission and vision, includes facilities and changes that promote non-motorized transit and reflects the involvement of the public and elected officials. My intention for someone reading the TIP is so one can clearly see the projects listed are fulfilling the division's purpose as well as helping implement the city's business plan. The purpose of the Transportation Systems Division is to create and maintain an interconnected multimodal network so that people and goods move safely and efficiently. The TIP is vital to the city because it identifies transportation-related projects which are or may become eligible for federal, state, or local funding. Local projects must be included to be eligible for state and federal grant programs. It also helps foster collaboration and coordination with other jurisdictions and agencies. Essentially, adding a project in the TIP is the first implementation step that puts the wheels into motion from visionary documents like the Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan. And as you can see from the graphic in front of you from the TIP, that those projects that get funded gets put into our CIP. The TIP organizes the projects into these categories. The Other Programs category consists of planning efforts and the 1% for the arts. New grant funding was received from FHWA Surface S Transportation Program, otherwise known as STP, Highway Safety Improvement Program, and State Transportation Improvement Board. The Wash dot City Safety Program and TIB Complete Streets Grant Awards triggered two new projects to be added, number 17 and number 24. Other new projects that were added were as number 46 and number 51. Project number 52 is a project that had to be added to the TIP because it was selected to receive funding through the state transportation budget and was initiated by CED. This was the only change to the draft TIP from the August 5th version. This will be for signage and a greenscape entry into the city as part of the I-405 Widening and Express Toll Lanes Project and will be constructed with the Northeast 44th Street interchange. The following two slides graphically represent how this document is a good planning tool and reference. This slide shows a summary of funding categories over the next six years. Our consisting funding stream is the share of the business and occupation tax and the allocation of the vehicle fuel tax assigned by council through the Bionim budget process. The blue is the local revitalization funding, LRF funds, for the South Lake, Washington area. And that is for projects in the South Port Landing area. The green revenue sources representing the federal or state grants are for specific projects. Most grant awards are received as reimbursements, so we have to show we've spent the money before we get them. While transportation has been successful in receiving grants for capital projects, grants are becoming more competitive each year. So as you can see, transportation leans heavily on grant funding to supplement the budget for large capital projects. The highly competitive projects tend to be the ones that show regional significance and the scope of work that will improve network performance, such as increased mobility or safety. Most grants require a local funding match that varies between 10% to 20% of the overall project costs. This chart displays the reason why the TIP is updated every year. The revenue sources are forecasts for future years, and there is always an adjustment to actual revenues and actual expenditures. Because of this, other than the grant award funds in the outer years, we focus more detail on the first half than the later half of the six years. I hope that this year's TIP will be a good reference for you to use during next year's council retreat and budget discussions. Within the next year, these are the projects we anticipate for construction and design. The Duval Avenue Northeast Roadway Improvements, Lake Washington Loop Trail Phase III, that's on the south side of the airport, Williams and Avenue and Wells Two Way Conversion, Howser Way Intersection and Pandestrian Improvements, that will be constructed at the same time as the Williams and Wells Two Way Conversion, Park Avenue North Extension and the Renton Elementary and Middle School Crossings. And design will begin on the projects that are listed. The recommended action is to approve this year's tip and then present the resolution for reading and adoption.
Any questions from the council? Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
See, nobody else has signed up to talk about that. So what is the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, do we want to make sure there's no one here? I just want to make sure there's no one in the room that would want to comment as well.
Is anybody in the room who wants to comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, there is somebody that raised her hand about commenting.
Oh.
Okay. Come to the podium right there and take your...
We're going to have an audience comment afterwards. Sorry. Yeah. I knew that's what he... He was thinking about audience comment.
Yeah, I was going to ask later for that, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
So we moved the... Did you move...
Yes, I totally messed this up, I'm sorry. So I made the motion to close the public hearing, and it was seconded.
And I seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? None? Motion passed. Now I think we need another motion, don't we?
So, Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a committee report to cover this later.
Oh, there's a committee report coming, okay. With that, now it's time for audience comment.
Administrative report.
Oh, administrative report. I promised him I was going to let that go. Yes. But you let him off. I let him off the hook, and now you're back on.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Person, council members. Chip Vincent filling in for Bob Harrison here this evening. Just a few items to share with you. First is, wanted the public and you to be aware that the King County Solid Waste Division is accepting public comments on the scope of the environmental impact statement for the Cedar Hills Regional Landfill 2020 Site Development Plan up until August 26. Additional information can be found at King County's website. Also, we received bad news today from our Community Services Department. One of the elm trees in Jones Park has Dutch elm disease and will have to be removed. It'll be removed after Labor Day. Additionally, on Thursday, August 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Puget Sound Energy will be temporarily shutting off power to homes and businesses located within the vicinity of Northeast 21st Street to replace utility power poles. The planned outage, as I indicated, will be about for six hours in duration. For anybody looking for additional information on this, please consult PSC's website, pse.com/plannedoutages. And then finally, we have a number of preventative street maintenance projects going on within the city at this time and over the course of the next few weeks. And I encourage anyone who's interested to find about the impacts of those projects to go to rentonwa.gov/traffic. And there's a list of all the projects and their specific timing of those as well. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're at the audience comment. We have one person signed up, and sir, we'll get to you with a second. Jason? You know the rules. You have five minutes. Give us your name. And city?
Yeah, so I live in Renton. I'm homeless, and I come here every single time that you guys are open to document things on C-SPAN because I do not have a phone or a secure place to put my papers and effects, all right? And I am not a slacker. I've always worked 50, 60, 70 hours a week. I found myself homeless due to the tyranny of the police department, and I'm like, straight up getting sick of it. I noticed that Amando Pavone and Ruth and Corman all did not charge or not on this charge for defacing public property or whatever for putting my name on mayoral signs after putting a sign up on Sunset Boulevard and, yeah, whatever. And that spoke of three things I wanted to see come out of these candidates. And also, your signs say is your name and that you're running for mayor. And there is not a single sign that says, "I believe that we should take the data away from the cops" because they sell books about people and that are delivered by cops about sign guys meeting Richie Rich. I'm like, I'm not... I'm not... I have issues in the past with things like governmental bullying, all right? And they do a lot of things that are beyond okay with like triangles with circles and triangles upside down, these nine to the six of the prior lower community, right? All right, so like, you can read the 68th U.N. Summit and read about all the 69ers and their issues. They're the neo-Nazis from World War II, all right? I did a sidewalk chalk all about it. But now we got police department offering $50 for blowjobs to girls that have been standing outside a store and not receiving anything, all right? Like, sorry, that's five times the going rate. That is an absolute... For a person that sits out there for four hours, maybe making $10, right? That is an absolute travesty to have a cop walk up and... It causes people to go beyond things that they themselves would find despicable, all right? I just hear these things from people, and I'm on the streets, so you might as well listen to them. You're running an issue role without a jury trial and having everybody's... I mean, I've not had a single person say that they have been offered a deal. I've been held in Akeem County, or, sorry, Kent Jail, right? During my trial readiness in solitary, so I could not call out to my lawyer. I've had huge issues with the Renton Police Department. I got bicycle tickets coming to me through mail when I told them I was homeless, and they said on recording... They said that they were recording it. So I mean, I said, "I'm homeless, and do you receive mail there?" And I said, "No." And then they said, "Well, we'll send you a ticket in the mail." How the hell you... By Article 4, it says, "We are to provide you a secure place for your papers and effects." Effects are governmental effects on people, all right? All right, like, secure, you know, a right to, right? A right to a speedy trial. A right to a lawyer, right? You have a right to a secure place, a personal office box, all right? That is a place to put your papers and your effects, your license, your ID, your birth certificate, things like that, in a personal office box. That's why they exist. We may have gotten away from it, but I have to come down here because I do not have a place to put a phone to put this shit on Facebook like I always have, all right? So if you ever want this to stop, wow, you can issue post office boxes to homeless people, and then they can just find them on their Facebook, all right? But it's absolutely sick to see your own life in a... or your journal printed before you actually get to do it, right? And we need to think about these things because these are things that are actually happening. The Justice Department ended up in Seattle over it, all right? Like, this is real deal shit. I got a kid walking around with half his face blown out because some guy hit him with brass knuckles. Brass knuckles are illegal, right? C-8681 AR, right? That's a... That better not be a... Please, Renton Police Officer. All right, but have a good day.
Thank you. If you'll give your name and city of...
Good evening, my name is John Glenn. I'm a resident of Renton, and I'm the president of the Renton Downtown Partnership. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you to you all for the work that you have done in downtown Renton and the work that you continue to champion for in downtown Renton. What I'm here for this evening is to speak to you primarily about the Pavilion Event Center RFP that I believe you discussed at the Committee of the Whole this evening. We just had our own Renton Downtown Partnership Board meeting, and we'd like to come to you this evening, first of all, saying thank you for the speed with which you have attempted to complete the Civic Core Plan. We see plans that sometimes go up on the shelf, and it's really nice to see the council and to see city staff moving forward so briskly on a plan that was created by the public. So first of all, thank you. We would urge caution, however. The last thing that we want to see is a vacant building in downtown Renton and especially one that is such an important city asset as the Pavilion Event Center. We know and work with both of the downtown business owners who have submitted requests, who have submitted proposals for the project and believe both of them are very, very capable individuals who would be able to do great things with the space. But we leave it up to you, and we ask that you would cautiously and judiciously move forward with whichever proposal you decide to move forward with. Thank you so much for your time, and once again, thank you for your work in downtown Renton.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council? Seeing none? We'll go to the consent agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the consent agenda be adopted as read or presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Seeing none? Motion passed. Now we're on to unfinished business.
The Committee of the Whole has...
No, I was waiting for Jason usually.
I have two Committee of the Whole reports, but I wasn't sure who wanted to present.
Oh, okay. That's where I was waiting for, anyway.
Committee of the Whole has a couple of committee reports.
Okay. The first Committee of the Whole committee report is the Authorization to Enter into an Agreement with Western Neon for Public Art in Downtown Renton. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign a sole-source contract with Western Neon in an amount not to exceed $146,261.28 to provide design, fabrication, and installation of the proposed public art at the intersection of South Second Street and Main Avenue, Main Avenue South. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur in the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Seeing none? Motion passed. Mr. Prince, I think you got others.
Yep.
Okay, I got one more Committee of the Committee of the Whole report. It's the Authorization to Enter into an Agreement with Kirk Cease for Public Art in the Sunset Community Park. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign a sole-source contract with artist Kirk Cease in an amount not to exceed $250,000 to provide design, fabrication, and installation of the proposed public art in the Sunset Community Park. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. Signed by the committee president, I mean, the council president, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur in the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Seeing none? The motion passed.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
That's all? Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee has four committee reports.
Okay, the first Finance Committee report is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. One, accounts payable, total payment of $5,31,654.49 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers and one wire transfer. Vouchers are available in the city clerk's office. Payroll, total payment of $1,623,591.63 for payroll vouchers, which includes 796 direct deposits and 39 checks. This is the July 1st through 15th, 2019 pay period. And finally, a third is a municipal court, total payment of $9,129.56 for their vouchers. This is signed by the committee chair and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Seeing none? The motion passed.
The next report is regarding the Finance Division reorg. The Finance Committee recommends that the council authorize the administration to reorganize the Finance Division effective September 1st, 2019, creating a separate Tax and License Work Group, which includes the reclassifications of, one, Tax and Licensing Program Manager, M-27 Step C, to Tax and Licensing Manager, M-28 Step C, Finance Analyst 3, N-16 Step C, the Tax and License Auditor 3, N-16 Step C, and Accounting Assistant 4, A-09 Step E. To remain the same, however, this position will report to the Tax and Licensing Manager. This is signed by the committee chair, vice chair, and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Seeing none? Motion passed.
The next report is regarding the 2019 Summer Meals Program in King County. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the authorization by the mayor and city clerk to execute the United Way of King County Grantee Agency Funding Contract from July 1st, 2019, to August 31st, 2019, and allocate the $4,000 grant award to support the 2019 Summer Meals Program in King County. This is signed by the committee and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, this grant is actually not for the meals. This is for the purchase of arts and supplies and equipment for the activities that go along with the feeding program. So with that, I'd like to move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Seeing none? Motion passed.
The final Finance Committee report is a salary adjustment for the golf course head professional. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to increase the head golf professional salary at Maplewood Golf Course to pay grade M-25 at Step E, which is a 7% increase or $6,860 annually, beginning September 1st, 2019. Signed by the committee and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, this is actually housekeeping. This has to do with some reorganization because of the, one of the new rules that's passed in Olympia regarding, I believe, vacation pay. Something like that, yes. So there's no change in salaries. This is just kind of a reorganization of the way they're being paid. So with that, I'd like to move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none? Motion passed. Is that it, Mr. Pavoni?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Aviation Committee has a couple of committee reports to present.
Okay, the first Transportation Aviation Committee committee report is Supplemental Agreement Number Four to the Contract with KPGPS for Rainier Avenue South Phase Four. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Supplemental Agreement Number Four to CAG 15089 with KPGPS for the Rainier Avenue South Phase Four, which is South Third Street to Northwest Third Place Project in the amount of $213,755. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McIrvin. Mr. McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee report, I'm not, oop, Transportation Committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, none? Motion passed.
Okay, the final report is Transportation Aviation Committee committee report for the 2020-2025 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to approve the annual updates to the 2020 to 2025 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the recommended action of the Transportation Aviation Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that the council concur in the recommendation of the Transportation Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing nay, seeing nonees, the motion passed. We're on to new business. Mr. Prince.
Legislation.
Oh, legislation. I'm just trying to skip a few things here. Legislation.
I have three resolutions being presented for adoption. The first is regarding the sole source contract for the Sunset Community Park Art Project. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, finding that the sole source exemption under RCW thirty-nine oh four two eighty-two A applies to the installation of public art in the Sunset Community Park, therefore waiving the state competitive bidding requirement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Kirk Cease for public art in the Sunset Community Park.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted as read, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay, seeing none, the motion passed.
The next resolution is also regarding public art. It's called the Renton Loop Project. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, finding that the sole source exemption under RCW thirty-nine oh four two eighty-two A applies to the installation of public art at the intersection of South Second Street and Main Avenue South in downtown Renton, therefore waiving the state competitive bidding requirement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Western Neon for public art in downtown Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that the adoption, the resolution be adopted as read, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay, seeing none? The motion is passed.
The final resolution is regarding the Six-Year TIP. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, updating and extending Renton Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for 2020 through 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGurven.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted as read, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, seeing none? The motion passed. Any other business, old business, new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, council is canceled due to a council holiday. Monday, September second, two thousand nineteen, there are no meetings for the Labor Day holiday. And then on Monday, September ninth, two thousand nineteen, we're also canceled, canceled for a council holiday. On Monday, September sixteenth, after all that time off, three-thirty PM in the council conference room, Plan Development Committee will be meeting. We have two items on the docket, docket number fourteen, and emerging issues in CED, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on September sixteenth at three-thirty, no, at four-thirty, the Finance Committee will be meeting in the council conference room. We have three items. The first is youth athletic program fee waivers, vouchers, and then third is emerging issues in finance. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. McGurven?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to announce that two committees have been canceled that would have occurred on Monday, September sixteenth. The Transportation Committee and the Community Services Committee will not be meeting that day, but the Committee of the Whole will be meeting, which I believe Mr. Prince meant to mention, but I'll go ahead and do it for him.
Please, go ahead.
There are five items on the adj, on the Agenda Committee the Whole will be meeting at five PM in the conferencing center. The first is council vacancy, second CRM project briefing, third Zen City project briefing, fourth affordable housing options, and five emerging issues. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. What's the wish of the council?
Move, adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Good night.